And call to order, there's 7:08 PM. And I see we are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And we're set. Donovan is absent.
Okay.
Thank you. And Dennis here, if you need, you can look for him. So, opening the public hearing, I would like to invite Jane and Dan Archibald, Pine Ridge Campground, additional use application. Just come forward.
You took your chair.
Oh, okay.
You can grab one if you want.
Okay.
Austin.
What do you want to say? So, the floor is yours. And you can just fill us in where you're going to be, what you want to do, stuff you've already told us, but since this is a public hearing.
Okay. You can press good.
Yes, as long as they can, as long as they can hear.
Okay. Well, Jane and I are sending a proposal in for a 57 site campground in Angel, near town. Seasonal, running from midday to mid-October. The land, size is 57 acres. And both 57 sites, eight literally, tents, five cabins, office building, three bathroom facilities. The sites are about 52 or so each. So, they're large sites. There's no, basically, it's like a state campground. There's likely to be swimming pool, there's no playgrounds, things of that nature. Basically, campground is central to nature, just getting into the woods and camping out from the end or wherever you have to. At this point, I don't foresee any seasonal sites. We might have that in the future, but if we do, seasonal sites will have to move every year, different location, I'm not going to allow any kind of sheds, decks, greenery, things of that nature, add-ons. And I put a planning board, there's a lot of people here, that's first site. So, it's carry-in, carry-out. I'm not looking for structures that are going to be in there for a long time. I don't want any kind of campers or R&amp;Ds there in the off-season. Because I don't feel like I'm probably going to be responsible for them during the winter time. There'll be probably two or three wells located there, two septic systems. Each site will have water, electric, and sewer available. Except for tent sites, of course, they'll have, they'll use the bathhouses, but they'll have shared electricity and suspended water. And that's basically the rundown of the campground.
And when do you propose open and close?
From midday to mid-October.
And open this up, if anyone who wants to ask questions, you would kindly raise your hand, and you will be recognized and you can speak. Any questions at all?
Could you tell me where this is?
Could you tell us your name, please?
Maurice Scally.
I'm sorry?
Maurice Scally.
Thank you.
Where this is?
It's 325 E Troop. So, you're heading for the transportation from here.
Yes.
Go past the cemeteries on both sides, go down the steep hill, and the left-hand side is a pond.
Yes.
Go up the hill, left-hand side is, that'll be the entrance.
Okay, thank you.
Do you live down E Troop?
I do. Yes, your name?
Amanda Waldrin. How do you think this will affect traffic in the area going up and down E Troop? I know we have dump days, it's pretty heavy traffic. What do you expect the difference to be? What time will the campground open and close? Are there going to be like closing hours, kind of like, you know, shutting time?
For traffic, for which, okay, what question, traffic for the, the campground is open 24 hours, so if somebody wants to leave coming and go.
At any time of the night when I'm in the lot?
Well, sure, like you wouldn't, anywhere else you're living, but the, I mean, the busy day I had on E Troop is Saturday, it's a dump day, but I would imagine people will be coming Thursday or Friday to arrive.
Right.
And they'll be tired of the party sometimes throughout the day on Sunday. So, we did a traffic analysis, what came up with was each spot, normally his average is about two and a half trips a day, that means one trip out, one trip back. So, it's like going to a grocery store and coming back per day. So, I don't think the increase is going to be substantial.
That's a nice.
No, and it's only a half a mile down the road, so.
Right, yeah, the way across the street, so I just, I don't kind of up and down a lot.
Sure.
Especially lately, it's been a lot of, you know, midnight traffic, 10, 11, you know, 12 o'clock at night, you know, trucks going up and down and hit that hill right there.
Right.
You know, pretty significantly, so I just didn't know if it was going to be like, yeah, 10 o'clock's kind of like, you know.
Well, mine are often going to be quiet nights, so I would imagine, I imagine everybody who's camping, they want to be at the campground, they don't want to be.
They don't want to be running around.
No, no, they're going to want to be sitting around the fire, you know.
So, kind of like a relaxed atmosphere.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, it's going to be.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I know some campgrounds are like Potty City, you know, you go and you potty all night and, you know, light up fireworks and all sorts of stuff, I just, that would be my only concern.
Oh, no.
If someone would come and ask.
No, I'm looking for the actual, more of adult-type.
Adult, relaxed.
Yeah, relaxed, just, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Bob Yves?
Bob Yves, yes.
Okay, of course, I'm going to butter. Now, are you going to post where your land ends against the other peoples? But I don't post my land.
Yeah, I'm going to set up, there's walking trails down there, there are walking roads throughout the area, and I'd like to get with you guys and walk in with you sometime, because you know the land better than I do. But I would certainly like to post the walking trails, and then mark off where your property of butts meet, and then figure out a way to, so maybe purchase your land. And it's not, that area, that corner down there is not a great place to walk anywhere.
No, I know.
So, I don't think there's going to be a lot of issues with that, and then I'd like just divert most of the foot traffic before they get close to your land areas. You could get lost down in there.
Yeah, people, people hunt down. I don't hunt, but lots of people hunt, well, sure, so we never posted it.
Well, I did post the land last year as much as I could, whatever the criteria was, every hundred feet, or I went.
Yeah, legally, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's any yellow signs, and I went, tried as much as I could without getting stuck in that.
That's right. She was wearing, hunting, eating behind the land while I was working up there, so I started by a big, huge Kubota orange tractor, and de-vil.
Good reason why. Now, how about fireworks?
No fireworks, no firearms, no.
No, absolutely.
No fireworks, no reason to have fireworks up there.
Yeah, I was just wondering, where are the woods?
They have fire.
Yeah, we're not going to, you have to have a fire ring. It's a state law to have a fire ring for every campsite, so it will be contained. They're not going to allow, just like a fire anywhere, it has to be contained.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's sweet. Yeah, I sent out rules to all the butters, I don't think I sent them to you guys.
Thank you, Dan.
No, I did not. I sent everybody out to E Troop. But, well, I thought it was fine. But I didn't, yeah, I didn't register no fireworks.
Yeah.
That's, yeah. Anybody else?
So, where are you now in your plans and everything?
So, right now, we have, which I have for the board, whoever wants to accept it. This is a copy of the Stonewall application that was submitted to the DEP. That was submitted on August 18th. They took away a 45-day window to deny or approve the project based on the idea of having them. Everything seems good, we're doing no structural measures for treatment, so no Stonewall ponds, no filters, anything like that. It's mainly based on vegetated buffers and level spreaders, which is the most low-impact development that you can do, treatment for development better yet. So, they seem to be going along with it very well, and we'll know within the next 15 days, I believe. After that point, as long as the board doesn't have any changes that they'd like to see on the plans, we can submit for final, as long as the DEP doesn't have any changes that they would like to see as well.
Okay, that all looks great. Would you, from the board, we have anything we'd like to add this other meeting to bring forward, or add our own meeting afterwards?
What do you want to do?
I think afterwards. I think we have new information to digest. And I thank you for all of this information, and I will tell you, I took a note from your book, and I got my colored market down.
It's brilliant.
And I, hey, I had a ball. I had a ball. And I, well, I can look at it and say, which is what I'm expecting.
Absolutely, say as I want.
I think we need a Pine Ridge Campground coloring book.
That would be good for you. But I thank you for all of this, and I think you should have your answer within 15 days. Our next meeting is on October, what is it?
20.
September, September 20th. And September 20th, and you come back done with everything you have, and that would be the time we could go forward with your final application. Things will be moving very, at a good steady pace at that point. Are we in agreement on that?
Would you, would you rather, or would the board rather, deal with questions that we have dredged up since our last meeting?
I think afterwards, yeah, afterwards. And if there's something more to leave, we can let you know before you come in. Yeah, so we are going to close the public hearing on the Pine Ridge Campground, and we shall see you in, to the 20th.
20th.
20th, thank you, thank you very much, thank you for this.
Absolutely.
That's really good. Have a good evening, and I'll hold your idea.
Is there all business for us, or not?
Not at this point. Thank you very, very much. Uh, would I just, oh, okay. Were you, public hearing, the muses?
Paul or Bob?
Care to just say anything, let us know?
Sure, so what we want to do is use our existing garage that we built on the corner of Route 19 and Moose Lane to start a property maintenance and excavation company, and show by, something like that. It's just my brother and I, we have no plans for employees at this point, another people small, as you know, we sold our oil and propane business about a year and a half ago. So, that's what we're, for the board tonight, to have a pretty good comment for it.
All right, is there anyone here who would like to address the board, the muses, any questions? Could I have your name, please?
Kathy Donner.
Thank you, Kathy.
I was wondering exactly what this involves in terms of additional space, you know, with the building, how will we expand it, how will we?
Well, I don't think it's going to be expanding anything more than what we have now, property-wise. We really don't want it to be that much bigger than it is. I don't see us doing anything.
We have, of course, we have a horse yard in, you know, that.
Right, yes.
That's going to stay.
I'm glad you have that.
Whether it's huge or not.
And, you know, we, we hope to just keep that lawn in front of your house lawn. I had to dig across it to get to the well. But there's standards for that, too, as Ken Ball can tell you, that we can only utilize so much, right kind of vegetated and unvegetated space, so we have to leave some of it vegetated with the lawn.
Okay, so in terms of extra machinery or whatever, it shouldn't be much louder, or?
No, I mean, I think my only concern that, you know, we don't want to work 24 hours a day, we don't want to have an open permit to work 24 hours a day, but we do need to be able to have an income on a year-round basis, and part of that income will have to be snowplowing. So, if it's midnight, and there's a storm coming.
Right.
I have to be able to start something up and pull it out of the garage, or if it's located out of the garage outside, I have to be able to start it up. Do I want to be out at midnight? No, I don't want to be out at midnight. But that's, I got to make my living until I can.
Right, on a day-to-day basis, it shouldn't, it shouldn't change just during storms?
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
On a day-to-day basis, it shouldn't change at all, just during storms and whatnot?
Storms are like, I wouldn't think why I'd want to be up there at 10 o'clock at night, you know?
Have you had excess noise already, or non-stop?
Non-stop. But that's not from us.
Well, your machinery, since you put in that building and whatnot, is, you know, it's big machinery, it is pretty loud, and we did have the pool running, sitting out there, well, during most of the day, I mean, during, trying to sit by the pool and enjoy some solitude has not been an option, so I'm just checking to see if it's going to increase, that's all.
And I understand, but just so you know, for the last two weeks, I, on purpose, did not work there.
Oh, it's been quiet?
Okay, for the last two weeks, I did not work there, so if any noise that you've heard, it hasn't been coming from us.
I know. Trust me, I can tell my direction, because I.
Good.
Yes, it's.
But I did that on purpose.
And that's appreciated, it's just, you know, and it might have just been part of when you initially were building and whatnot, that was necessary, which is fine, I just, you know, I'm just checking.
But now the septic system's done. I've got a little bit more greasing to do out back, just a little bit. But the front area's been greeded off.
It looks, it looks very, very nice.
So, and I have a little bit more greasing to do on the well line that goes across to the well, I got to get that seeded in and create other moves.
Okay, well, it's like, most of it's when you were indeed doing nothing, I'm just.
Were we going to wire up the stone wall at the entrance there? Just for snowplow, at your entrance? We might take a few rocks away from the right and the left, that's about it.
Just to make it a wider driveway.
That's fine.
Mrs. Bellhoff, what is your address, where do you live?
2308. Our driveway is right past their ability.
Going north?
This way.
South.
North.
North, north.
West.
Going to, heading towards New Hampshire.
New Hampshire.
New Hampshire.
So, are you number 23, 27?
24.
24.
There's the right way across the Muses property.
Okay.
Yes.
There's, of course, right, right to the right, same right there. The garage is other construction, I don't have a picture, I think.
Okay. Which I think is on the set, probably like, you know, the noise thing is, and so it's, it's good to know that that will be, be known, I mean, I am understanding, I know that it takes, you know, to instruct something, you do have to make noise. But I was just, you know, and you're not the 2 o'clock in the morning, 4 o'clock in the morning people, so that's, that's another whole issue. But, no. That's, that was my only question, was just, you know, potential impact, for snowplow, I mean, come on, of course, you need to, the hours.
But that's our only, that's our only thing that I can see, snowplowing, or if something breaks down, that we'd have to be up there.
Right.
Off-hours.
That's fine. Excellent, thank you very much.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Any other questions from the back of the room? Anything from the board? We're moving the lot very nicely tonight, Tom.
Quick one. As I'm looking at the drawing, I think this 8 and 1/2 by 11 is what you provided for.
Yes.
A full-size one.
We had a full-size.
We didn't get that.
I can work it for you.
I got a little, I have to see Ken, he's got the best.
Shouldn't have sent one there. Are you going to give back?
For a dollar, she said.
There's no change in the existing curb, I'm saying, what is, what is on this set, or from what are any changes you made?
No.
Okay. The other one was, how even did salt storage, if it even?
We have no plans, right, Bobby?
No.
No plans, because the sand trucks that we parked inside.
And never had salt.
We never had salt in our spreaders, because they were losing weight, so it was just plain sand. Now, that's not to say that if the town doesn't get necessary, I can say, well, I'll help these sand, and then I have to put something on there. It's going to be on there, but I don't plan on leaving the truck outside, I want the truck inside, outside.
I think Mike and John are probably the same as Tom, is you've got your concrete bins out back, it's not going to be filled of salt and fertilizer and.
No.
Something like that, so no chemical storage on the side.
The only storage on site will be those two diesel tanks.
Yeah.
The one there existing now.
Right.
Sorry.
The diesel tanks.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. The one there now is a dual wall. So, it's, Bram's latest goes in.
Yeah.
How many trucks that?
For snowplow?
Yeah, or a year-round, would you anticipate?
I would say anyplace from, what, 6 to 12?
6 to 12.
Inside or outside?
Now, if somebody drove in and was looking to buy materials from you, sand or something, are you going to do retail sales, or just delivery?
I don't really want to do retail sales, because we own a couple of dump trucks, I want to be able to deliver that myself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I really don't, I don't want to be open, you know, like, put a sign out there that says, Saturday open, homeowners, come get, bark on, I don't want that.
That was the first condition I had, was no retail sales, from what we talked about.
Right.
And, you know, I think it'd be no employees, just the two of you, right?
Right.
No chemical storage, no automotive repair or anything like that, just your personal stuff.
Starved.
Now, any vehicles for sale out front, or anything like that?
There will be occasional.
Yeah, one, two at a time.
I'll let Bobby answer.
Hands. Two. I wouldn't even think I'd want one out front, really. Looks too nice.
It does look good.
I like it, it does, yeah.
Have that load it out there with the pile of it on, which is ridiculous, but I just said I haven't looked at it. Which is a sale, or.
I see.
Yeah, I should move it.
It's my thing.
I don't think that would be, I mean, I can't say it wouldn't happen, but I think.
Next year, what we sell, we'll have those cucumbers up the end of the road.
If I'm staying, I don't care about.
We, we don't, they don't.
I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as we don't find squash tomatoes, of course, we're going to have that ground.
Like squirrels.
The squirrels. Yeah, the squirrels, huh? That may become a planning board issue when you come in here, how many squirrels have you had to be? Tom?
What is the status quo of the oil tanks and propane tanks up there?
No idea, they don't belong to me anymore.
That's Eastern.
That is Eastern propane.
No, does Eastern still going to be utilizing this property for their?
They have right-of-way, and they're responsible for plowing the sanding, the right-of-way from Route 19 into their facility.
Okay. So, but you're using this, Moose Lane is going to be utilized by you two fellows.
Yeah.
And Great Eastern.
Yeah.
And, of course, we still utilize it, it's our two houses.
I guess what struck me going by was how small all of these lots are. When we looked at the mount, they look much.
That's because you're doing 60 miles an hour.
My schedule there. And there doesn't seem to be much buffers between the houses and the lots, and especially with the leaves down in the winter, it must get pretty.
Those lots in the front there, was it 30, 31, 32, those were split off by Hurt Lumber 40 years ago.
Yeah.
45 years ago.
Well, no, I mean, 10, 11, 12, we're talking about.
I don't know, I got glasses on, man.
Maybe one could.
Yeah, he puts his glasses all the time, I thought, just leave them on your face like that.
He's got one, isn't he?
But one of them is not developed, it's the middle one. But it's owned by Mr. Kewitt on the east side, this side. Yeah, that's 250 feet of each one.
That's right, that's right. So, yeah, so 14, 26, and 27 is my brother Bob's, 28, 29.
I'm a senior.
Transition there?
Non-residential can go 30 percent, because when we looked at it, we were really close to 20, then we set a normal limit down, so we can bump up to the 30, so I gave him right at the, he was just meeting at 20 percent. So, you've said exactly, he's about 20 percent right now? Would that be the, if it's residential or commercial, what if it's mixed use, what do you, what do you consider?
I would say 30 percent.
Yeah, yeah, so if they had an apartment in that building, so 30 percent.
Correct, yeah.
Will that parking area be paved, or just gravel here?
Anyone else?
See.
Yes.
Jeremy Donner, just a quick question, the parking areas in the rear of your building, kind of where it's adjacent to the right way, if you speak to what you expect the traffic like to be there, we're hoping no obstructions on the driveway, etc.
Exactly, no obstruction on the driveway, and that driveway, if and when we rent the apartment out.
And where it exists.
It'll only be for the person renting the apartment, only for them, it's not meant for us, sir.
Okay, we just got a couple of informed family members who want to be sure you get in and out.
Oh, I don't blame you, and I understand that.
I can't see what they're doing, is really having much of an impact on this property there, and you're not, it's not like you're changing the whole.
Right, and to go along with Dennis, and I'll say this to Kathy and Jeremy, too, remember that, we come in on Moose Lane, everything, we don't want to come in through your driveway. Or for anything.
Yeah, I understand, and it's your property, I mean, just to speak to a gentleman said I can't help but to disagree, because he backed there a few months ago, you just seen that there's a significant difference in how that property looks.
Yeah.
And there's a significant difference in the noise level coming out, but as a result of the vegetation, it's going to be straight, so.
But we, yeah.
But there's noise, a lot of the noise coming off that property back when you piled first move, I mean, it's always been up and down in the last 30 years, or 40 years, but it's been now.
I think there's more light at night than there's anything.
And not, not that this is a positive, but I've always thought that with as much traffic going in and out of Moose Lane has kept us from getting broken into, because you can never tell when there's going to be someone going down that road.
Well, GPS will put you, if you try to Google my driveway, or GPS my driveway, it'll put it in the middle of yours.
Yeah.
That's where you can land under, GPS is. That's, that's where you can land under, GPS is a little bit of a misunderstanding, it's just like, people get so confused.
Yeah.
This doesn't look like a driveway.
No, but it's gonna be used like, oh, well, not fifty years, no, no. Fifty years. Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Tom, Dennis, anyone else, anything on this? I'm going to suggest that we do do a sidewalk. And we'll do it quickly because we'll see you back in a minute after the sidewalk. So, in fact, let's, let's do that right now, what we can set up a date to do that next week. I'd rather do it sooner than just before the meeting again, because then we, and again, we can get back to you if we have more questions. Tom, would you agree the sidewalk next week?
Uh, yes, evenings.
Sorry?
Any evening.
Any evening.
What's Saturday available too, if that's, works for anybody?
Oh, actually, I've got, I've got a conflict on Wednesday night.
On Wednesday, does a Saturday morning work for you?
Eight AM, noon, I can do.
Eight AM?
Yes, no.
And what Saturday is this one?
Fifteen.
Is that your schedule to come, you can?
Yeah.
Because we could do it next Thursday evening too, instead of the meeting, right?
We could, we could.
Because you only have trouble making those.
Yeah, we'll be after dark.
What's your priorities, Tom?
What about Tuesday?
I can't do next Tuesday, oh my day.
Go for Saturday, and for whatever you have, for one person.
Could it be this Saturday?
I don't know, I'm tired of this Saturday.
Okay, let's go live with some dates, guys, I'm wide open.
Saturday the fifteenth, noon?
I have OSHA training that day.
What else, could you do that Tuesday? Is it just Tuesday you can't do?
Is Bob holding OSHA training with you?
Um, that's, yeah, just.
Just be sore, man.
Can we do Tuesday the eighteenth?
How about Tuesday the eighteenth?
Tuesday the eighteenth, what time?
Six, it's, it's getting hard.
It'll work on me.
Five.
Five.
Six will be five.
Tuesdays, I hope we have times.
No, no, actually, Tuesday's not a good night, so come on, kid.
Oh, that's our selection.
We have a meeting Tuesday night. Okay, we're going to, um, what are you doing, eight o'clock on a Saturday morning?
Doing my chores, I mean, we can do that, it's fine, Saturday's fine.
Eight.
But it's got the trains.
Fifteen.
Because I'll go right there to do three days from now, or two days from now.
You can't, you can't do it.
Yeah, but you won't need me.
No, no, I can't do a couple, no, it's.
You can on the website?
It's not for me.
So, we gotta get on, we gotta get on the website, so we, we've gotta find a time between the, um, it's gotta be a week out from now because it has to be.
Posted.
Posted. And, yeah, well, that's helpful, Tom, thank you. Just gonna walk around.
The fifteenth, noon?
Can we do the fifteenth at eight o'clock?
Eight AM?
Eight AM.
You could take it off, please.
Yeah, because I.
I can do nothing.
Eight o'clock works for me, really, yeah. It's okay.
Breakfast, it's.
Uh, is breakfast included? That could be construed, but coffee would be acceptable.
At eight o'clock.
At eight o'clock and the fifteenth? The fifteenth.
We hear on site. We go ahead. We'll be here at eight o'clock and we'll be there at eight o'clock too.
Yeah, because we're about sixty miles an hour.
Back to eight o'clock.
Sixty miles an hour down the road. And that, we have, we have to post it because it's public, so that's why, yeah.
Over the nose.
It'll be, it'll be quick.
So what we talked about tonight is no retail sales.
No retail sales.
No employees, no chemical hazardous waste storage on site.
Right.
We've gotta nail down the commercial vehicle sales.
Right.
It's kind of a hobby thing, but you just have to call it what it is. Hours of operations, you were thinking sunrise, sunset originally is what you'd said. And the other note I just had was no additional lighting without, you know, coming back and talking to the board, the lighting you have is fairly downwashed now.
Some of it could be shut down, happy day, because I know there's some, a lot of it out back now.
Been setting up on a sensor maybe if something goes out there.
Does that lighting bother out there? In my neighborhood, in the back of the garage, does that lighting bother you?
Very sorry.
No.
I was thinking, Ken, that hours of operation, we talked about noise ordinance, and it was something four, six AM, other than one at a time, six AM to ten PM, and we have a six AM timeframe on a lot of other businesses and towns, this type of work.
Six AM, ten PM?
Yeah.
Is that what we agreed?
Again, that would be.
Sundays, right? Aren't Sundays later?
Sundays.
Not in our work.
Not, not according to, as you know.
The one I saw online was like, seven.
Well, I, you know, I'm breaking up this snow plowing, but that's Mrs. Belmont, that's fine, you know.
Standard hours of operation.
Right, and, um, I mean, like, this is your Sunday, yeah.
Yeah, it's my Sunday.
Yeah, like he said, I have sort of a similar situation, and I know, I wanna know that I can get out when there's three feet of snow, and I don't really care what time it is, so I, you know, so.
Yeah, that's, we're, we're very flexible on the, on the snow thing, that's.
We want to have.
This is maintenance, you know.
We want to have it, that's, that's what it is.
Exactly.
Do you guys, we'll do it at six AM.
Oh, yeah.
Would you be willing to a little later on the weekends? Are you standard that snow?
As long as it was understood that if we had to do it, I mean, who's gonna set the standard, like?
First of all, it's not, that's not even being met now, I mean, I mean, we're not there earlier.
We don't even show up there on a Saturday until the afternoon, if at all, and I don't want to.
I was gonna say, you don't wanna get up at six o'clock.
No, I don't, but if I have to, because of whatever work comes our way, it can't be restricted.
Especially with the nature of the business that you're doing.
Right, I mean, if it only was a working business, we were mostly back in there by six o'clock at night, but if someone ran out of oil or propane or emergency came in at one, I had to go out, it was an emergency.
Right.
But you already have six to ten on the average.
Six AM is the starting.
Yeah.
Lose any operations, I know.
And that is our ordinance.
Is what's set.
Yeah, already.
That's a good new policy. And, and that's just a decimal reading? It's seven to ten and then ninety, ten PM, Saturdays and Sundays.
Oh, for the decimals?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's sixty decimal readings at the property line during daytime and fifty at nighttime.
Ken, can you pull up the smaller version, so we have a full screen? A lot on a full screen, no. Please.
You can't do that, I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering if, if there was this buffer, we were looking before on the buffer between all of above and the, how, what?
Similar, similar.
Well, we're Belmont's, my dad's similar.
We talked before about along the stone wall on the, what I would call the southeastally boundary. Uh, it, it has four, uh, you start with five, seven, point seven seven, and proceed.
He's done the horse.
Yeah, right, right there.
That's basically, I think, a stone wall.
Yeah, we have a, we have a fence set up partially there for like our pool area as well, so that, that area is a trail of boundary for us.
So that the, the fence starts about point seven seven?
Yeah.
Roughly?
Yeah, roughly.
Yeah. And runs all the way up to the corner, seven point four.
Runs up to that dark spot right there? Yeah, a little before that, but you're not, you're not far off at all.
Yeah.
The horse line is a, no.
Yeah.
We don't care, that's fine, that's, it's actually kinda pretty.
And the other buffer that would be more between eastern, you folks, proceeding from, no, from that same point, Ken, proceeding north-westerly to the corner, yeah, right there.
Yeah, right there.
Could that be enhanced in any way to make your, uh, neighborly relations? Your father always wanted that enhanced.
Yes, because it's dealing with my dad.
The trees didn't work.
But I'm on, it could ever happen.
That's been the problem, I guess now like that's something you have to take up at Eastern, because those guys feel free to bring their trucks in all, all the time, all out of the day, regardless, so.
At night. And I don't sleep well, and I'm not well myself, and I'm, my windows to my bed are directly.
So you're.
Office is got, so it lifts me up frequently, I know, it's not, it's not you, this is a whole different issue that I need to address with you.
So these guys couldn't help it?
No, no, unfortunately, that's Eastern propane, we wish these guys would.
Because they're reasonable.
Yes, they don't care.
They can call them a million times, they, oh, yeah, 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 and that's all that happens, yes, right.
Would there be any purpose or anything achieved by, uh, like a double line of pine trees along the five, the first border we looked at?
I think we're pretty good on that, I don't think that there's anything they can really do there to make that better, there's not, and again, I don't think we're getting a ton of noise there from them, honestly, our, our biggest, our largest noise complaint, now that they're done their construction in the front, has to do with our opposing neighbors who are terrorizing my mother and my grandpa, these guys have done their part.
And they're very agreeable and.
Yeah, the trees that are down there in the garage, that's all natural.
Yeah.
That's all natural, and that was left pine trees, that's all big pine in there.
Yeah.
Big pine, yeah. But there's, you know, there's not much on that north-western line they're talking about.
Back here?
There's not, you have a lot of ledge around, but anyway, it's, yeah.
We didn't get a truck that's.
There are, but it didn't work.
Yeah.
Has no soil back there.
All set?
All set? One sec. Okay, so what we'll do is we will close a public hearing on this, and Bob will see you at eight o'clock on September fifteenth, and then back here to wrap things up properly.
No, that's.
Twenty. And we, thank you very much for coming in.
That was very nice of you to give us your plug, appreciate it, and guys, we had a quiet process, so thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm.
Yes, guys, sorry, I didn't hear about that.
We're our neighbors, so that's the way we wanna say it.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're. Yeah, 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 just get over there.
He's hanging an eighty-nine and.
Thanks, Tom.
Well, I took a couple times a month, but.
Mister, Mister LeBite? I suck at eyes, except when I write their names. Eye control. And, and, and I'm gonna ask you, please, remember, we all have to raise our hands if we.
You're supposed to raise that hand?
Yes, the principal said so.
I know, we used to make.
Don't tell Tom that. Mister, Mister LeBite? I'm on now. I'll give you the new spelling of your name. L-A-E-T-T-I-K-E. Since this is a public hearing, I'd like you just to sort of tell everybody what you have told us over the last couple of weeks, and we'll go from there, Richard, thank you.
So, we're, we're proposing to continue the operations of Terry Grant's pit on Hebo Highway Road, he owns roughly a hundred and fifty acres out there, we have a purchase and sale of about forty of that, we're only proposing to use thirteen of that for the capital operation, the rest of it will remain natural. So that's basically what we're proposing to do, we kinda done some stuff with the town, we're gonna improve the Hebo Highway Road, part of the town's request, or many other requests that the town's made.
That's it in a nutshell? Okay, we have the reuse digest version here, so questions from, yeah, let's, please state your name and.
So, my name's Richard Nass, I live on the Milton Mill Road, road that's traveled by a lot of gravel trucks now, so I live by the bridge, get to your gravel pit, you have to go across the river, right?
Yes, yeah, you mean on Hebo Highway?
On the Hebo Highway.
Yeah.
You go by the cemetery.
Yeah.
There's a bridge.
Yes, yeah.
So what is the status of the bridge?
It's actually a culvert at this time.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, yeah, they've, Terry had upgraded that, I don't know, five, six, seven, eight years ago, might not have more than I did.
I thought it was still a bridge when I did it, asshole. Then some discussion in public, the Slifans meetings, they thought that bridge had to do mostly to the cemetery and the land beyond it, up the Hebo Highway Road, so I assumed it was still a bridge too, and not very in shape, so I just am trying to figure out how you guys are gonna get gravel on it.
Yeah, right, no, there is a culvert there now.
And so how big are your trucks? What are you talking about?
Good, tri-exle dump trucks.
Tri-exle dump?
Yeah.
Okay, not the big?
No.
Forty-yard?
No, no, it's.
Eighteen-year, how big, eighteen?
Yeah, eighteen-year trucks, yeah.
Yeah.
So no plans to go for the forty-yard dumps then?
No, that, the pit really doesn't accommodate that too much, it's a small operation in there, it would be, really wouldn't be feasible for us to, to do that, so.
So where are you gonna go when you come out onto the Milton Mills Road?
Well, generally speaking, we'll, we'll be taking a right to one oh nine, but we have made a negotiation with the town that during the school hours, when the lights are flashing, we're gonna go left, we won't go through the school zone.
So you're gonna go left and then where? To the left.
Stanford, is it Stanford?
Yes. And that's simply during those school hours when the lights are flashing, so.
So you're trucking not toward Manhattan, you're trucking towards Stanford?
Correct.
That's right. Is that where most of your business is, in Stanford?
Yeah, we're located in Stanford.
Yeah. We do, we do a Garmont Act and Shadley, the surrounding community.
How big's the pit now, you said thirteen acres is open?
Yeah. Nope, uh, I'd have to go to the plan, we have an existing condition plan that we.
Now that's almost. It's about an acre open now.
Yes, it's about an acre open, and over the course of a long time, you know, we're a small operation, we don't anticipate, you know, also they can apply for DEP, so we're in the process of that, yes.
Do not have that.
We do not have that, yes. Thank you.
The intention is personal use, for your business, not open, not retail sales?
Is that gonna be a condition, no retail sales, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if I was a colleague and said I needed.
So, well, we would, we would deliver, you know, we can, we're not going to sell to other contractors, they're not gonna come in with their dump trucks, and we sell material out of the gravel, but it's.
You could, you could truck and load to need.
Yeah, yes, absolutely, and that's obviously what we're in business.
I don't true retail sales, you're not on gravel.
Right, yeah, so that means, you know, if another contractor wanted to come in with their trucks and, and buy material. and buy material out of this particular pit, you know, we wouldn't be allowed to do that apart from this permit.
Yes, ma'am, your name?
Beth Cornish. We are actually the only house on Hebo Highville on the Acton side at this time.
Yep.
We live there year-round. We maintain the road in the winter so we can get back and forth to our house. Are you guys seasonal? Are you going around all winter? That road becomes really a cow path in the wintertime, it's a luge. There's no way that two vehicles can meet on that road.
So we have, the town has requested that we bring it up to town standards for the road, the first two hundred and fifty feet.
Okay.
So we'll actually be upgrading that first two hundred and fifty feet of road up to town standards.
Going in where Terry goes in now, where the gate is?
Yes, yeah, exactly.
So it would be a significant improvement to your road.
Yeah, and at that time, two vehicles will be able to pass.
Okay.
You know, so with those improvements.
The only place would be where the culvert is.
Yes, obviously.
You know, there'll be a...
So you're not widening that road?
No, no, we're not going to do that, no, but that section of road will be probably to town standard.
Now, are you guys planning to blast in there?
No, no.
So you're pulling off the bedrock, you're not going down into it?
Yeah, so we anticipate the... That's correct, and we anticipate the thirteen acres being usable material, just gravel. The rest of the acreage, the remainder of the forty, we anticipate not being usable material, so that's why we're only proposing to use that section, so.
Do we know how far, Ken, you might be able to answer this, how far that thirteen goes to where we are?
Do you know how far from the beginning to this area you are? Which one is the old lot?
Is there twenty-five, one, twenty-five days, something like that?
They're right.
We're on the opposite side of the road.
Right, Mrs. Cornish?
Yes.
They're a thousand feet past where you guys start, your property right there, so if you go from there.
Where's the forty acres?
It's a thousand feet right there. So this is the existing pit right here in your...
All that's forty acres?
No, that's, that's a hundred, that's Terry's territory.
Let's do one at a time, okay?
You don't want to return at this point? This is the end of the corner. I didn't know if you got some number right here. Two thousand feet.
Two thousand feet.
So it's probably the end is roughly, yeah, right up there. Ten minutes cuts across to where the fourteen is. Right here. Not that far.
Although where the fourteen is.
Fourteen, I bet.
If you go right, you got the right side, it would be probably the proposed quarter.
And then down to the zero.
Yeah, second. So that's the forty right there.
Okay, so you would be coming past us, yeah?
Yep, yep, but the, it would be a hundred feet of buffer from the Hebo Highville Road to where the slope starts. Have you seen the plan?
I have not.
No.
Now, our concern was obviously our well. We're only a hundred and fifty-one feet down in a mountain well. So if you guys were to blast or something like that and hit the water table, you could drain our well. Things like that.
Yeah, so another part of the project for us is the town's required to put in monitoring wells. To monitor, we maintain that separation between the groundwater, we don't impact the groundwater. So that's, you know, make those decisions as well.
How far are you going with that improvement?
Supposedly fifty feet from here, so I don't know where that brings us.
So we're probably going out of the...
Yeah, it's not going anywhere near, I'm not sure. No.
No, they're going to widen the lawn.
So that's where the entrance is now in the property.
So where our business, where we'll be traveling, yeah, is the right?
Mister Neil, we had another question before.
No, Nass?
Nass, I'm sorry, Mister Nass.
So where is Terry Grant's house on that list, on that map? So on the other side, it's...
He's down on the right, just a little ways.
Okay.
Do you see the other dog, the other dog in line on the edge of the property, which is Tattle Street?
Okay.
Terry is up in that corner of Milton Mills. Where on Milton Mills are you?
The way down the other end, New Hampshire line.
Oh, you're up at the end, towards New Hampshire.
Yeah.
So we don't, we, our trucks are not registered IRP. We don't go intrasleep, we don't travel to New Hampshire, we don't do any work in New Hampshire. All our work is in Maine.
Okay. So the only other that you have to deal with in terms of permission to improve the road would be Terry?
Terry.
Terry owns both sides, encompassing all of that area.
Yeah, and then obviously we want to improve down by the cemetery as well. So we'll probably have to contact them with a little bit of improvement, which I think this is welcome because I think this may be a concern about the trees or something.
Yeah, I actually took the initiative to call the cemetery director there.
Okay.
And let her know that I didn't send her it, just left a message on a machine that we were having a hearing tonight and she expressed...
Do you have any contact information that I can talk to?
I, none of my head, but it's upstairs on a bulletin board next to the vertical file. Let's see, it says Maple Grove Cemetery. We did send a letter to the cemetery, hereabouts ninety-one, a notice. She had expressed concerns to the community and town that the roots of the...
Sugar beetles there, on the fence line were getting beer rooted. So again, we'd like to bring that grade up.
That would be great if you could.
Yeah.
I just spoke to Lois a couple of weeks ago about this, and her comment to me was, she can't see that these guys have been doing anything different than what's been done in there really for the improved road.
Yeah.
And which again, she was in charge of it. That's what she told me anyway.
Yep.
And I believe right now she's on vacation, she must probably be, she wasn't yet, because that's a cool story.
Have we, any questions from our, maybe your friend? Now, you can work on here?
We do, you know, it's, for us, it's, we're going to be there periodically. It's not going to be a day-to-day thing, you know, we don't, it's going to come in spells and waves, so hard to say exactly, you know, but yeah, we do work year-round, but we're not a, we're not a mining company. We're not, we don't find gravel because we're an excavator company, so our market is everywhere, you know, it's simply for the use of the material. So it's periodic.
So you're not going to leave equipment in there?
We'll probably leave a loader in there.
Again, it'll be periodically, you know, we'll leave machines in there, kind of working in that area, and then we'll just move them out.
Do you realize that pit is used an awful lot now?
Yeah, I understand that, yeah, so we're going to put a gate out, then we're going to...
When we were building, we had our contractors' equipment damaged.
Right.
Yep.
People just came in and threw beer and beer cans and, you know, just, they dumped stuff on the road. Garbage, linters, we've stained it all.
Hopefully, maybe a little more activity.
Not a lot, you know, he's the one who maintains the road so we can get it in and out. Yeah, just somewhere where...
Yeah, so how would you describe your business? What do you actually do? Do you build houses or are you, you're excavators?
We do excavation.
Yeah, okay, so no shopping centers, you don't do road building?
Uh, we do, yep.
Shopping centers?
Uh, not shopping centers, no.
Road building for like driveways or for towns?
Yeah, we do a variety of things, so we do primarily in this area, we do like a lot of big foundation septic systems, a lot of replacement septic systems along the lakes and stuff like that. So that's a big part of our business and that's why this kind of fits in for us, you know, because we do that service in this area a lot, so that kind of stuff.
Yes, Tom?
What kind of a arrangement are you going to have with Terry regarding the closing of this? He will have no financial interest in anything that you're doing on this proposed lot of forty acres, right?
Right.
Anything else? I'm going to close the public hearing and we will discuss further tonight, but we're going to go in the same order as you came forward. And I thank everybody very much for coming out and sharing your concerns and putting your questions forward. And the plan board is a public meeting, even when it's not a public hearing, you're always welcome to come. In that sense, we ask you to sort of keep your questions to what is germane to what we're talking about and, you know, put all your thoughts and concerns where I can help you. Thank you for that. Give us your time and have a good rest of the evening.
Thank you.
What's the board thinking about for an entrance? Usually the pit to the road is some sort of a paved entranceway so the trucks pull out. In this case, they're going onto a road and then going, the road goes on to another road. So it'd be just pulling out onto Milton Mills.
You talked about stone dust and...
Yeah, I thought we talked about stone dust and that would be created when necessary.
Replant asphalt, something like that.
One that, yeah. And does that...
Can I click on that?
Yeah.
I was just thinking, right, we just did Romack and they put that little tiny parking lot up there and we asked them to put an asphalt, fifteen-foot asphalt deeper in right there.
Right.
So it seems like it's kind of a standard thing we do and it might make it easier for them to clean the sand off the road, like not driving out Milton Mills Road. If you have a little apron there, you go sweep that off and have to go on the road as much and be in the traffic's way. I don't know if you're opposed to it, since you're upgrading the road anyway, I mean...
Do we have the authority to request something on a state road?
Oh, yeah, I think we do.
Why?
We don't own road.
Do you maintain that road as a single team?
It's like a split agreement.
But that is, the state owns that road.
Right, oh, I know.
The town discontinued the road and they turned it over to the state. And they do have a...
Well, I think kind of nasty snowball, but I'm not worried about it.
But the board will...
Yeah.
At least all I'm saying is, a lot of the snow, that's a agreement with the state, but the state owns that road, just like they own one oh nine, is what I'm saying.
Right, well, they just repeat and they go along and you see they put lots of little aprons out, you know, and if they, if they'd known it was going to be heavy trucks coming in, I'm sure they would have put a little apron right there too, like they did for someone's driveway right next.
Well, that puts aprons out for a paving company, I mean, for town roads, paving roads, that's a sustained practice.
Right, well, there's no apron there.
But there's apron like on Walmart going on Sunday night.
Oh, yeah, we asked them to...
Just a little clarification, because they're pulling onto a road and that's the next road out.
So this one is different in that way because there's another road in between.
What if we use a replanted asphalt?
That'd be the same stone dust we have.
It's brown asphalt is what it is, isn't it? They put it down and once the heat gets through it, it binds back up, much like asphalt.
Same with calcium, it's calcium.
Yep. I just, it was funny that we, we asked, you know, a big, small, small, you know, they tend car parking lots to do it, and here we are with triaxes coming out and we want asphalt to go out.
Right, no, I'm saying, but I think this, the difference, I think, is because they're, they're...
But they do own part of the Hebo Highville front row, so it is like a, it's a private way that they do own part of the road, just not that part. And there's a lot of resexts in the town.
It's a little less direct.
Well, they find lots of people that maintain the road, they don't own, like the people who are in here tonight, here they are, and he whatever does to maintain it, but it's not his property, he just wait up in there. So it'd be similar kind of thing.
So the conditions we talked about before were the noise levels not to exceed sixty decibels. The stumps and unmarketable material ground and left on-site for revegetation. Notify the CEO, if you're trucking off-site material onsite, no room to leave the site. Forty truck trips a day, crushings limited to two hundred hours per year. Monday to Friday, eight to four. Again, the sixty decibels on that. Acquire the DEP permit. No fuel stored onsite, proverbial pad for refueling. Trucks entering signs, this is posted on Hebo Highville, I think that's probably Milton Mills. No trucks passing in front of the school during the twenty mile an hour flashing lights. Upgrade the Hebo Highville Road to include at least two hundred and fifty feet of frontage on the, to create the new lot. Install the monitoring wells. How many wells are we thinking?
I think we said one per acre, once it's open.
One per acre, once you're...
The gated entrance with an OX box. Submit the insurance binder and plan board's going to determine escrow. Annual report submitted to the town when it's requested and a set of approved plans kept on site.
Okay, where are you reading it?
That's just something we made up.
This is what my wife's waiting to tell me. We don't have the minutes from, as I've said before, our gal is waiting for the stork or something, so things got a little tied up and...
So with no retail sales going down, is that already in the plan?
I believe we have a double plan.
I think there's another plan.
I think that these were additional things that needed to be added to the report.
Which often, obviously, the retail salesmen, people coming in buying, they are obviously to...
We have no vegetable stand on the, with bad gravel on the...
So the eighth of four, that was kind of only crushing, right?
Correct, yeah.
What did we, I mean, seven to five is the operation.
Seven to five and Saturday, seven to four.
So the only one on here that we are uncomfortable with is the note number three, the notify, can we truck material onsite?
We had a pit trucking stuff in from Boston and it was an open upper, so it was the blue clay from Boston. We had no idea, so that would be similar to, you guys got involved with ripping a shoe shop down in Sanford and you're trucking the material back in. So I think it'd be as simple as...
If there was material or something on those walls?
I mean, if you're going to sell a home and it's some existing septic stuff, we don't care about that. It may, it's as simple as an email that or something, it's...
Our thing is, you know, a lot of times we may end up with two or three looms of gravel.
You don't want trucks coming back in.
It is hard to quite, we don't always know until you're actually doing the job.
Yeah.
So for us to actually contact you, you know, could we put, you know, something to the effect of no hazardous materials or no...
We alter that, it's unsatisfying, both of us, I guess.
But that's original material still, right? It's gravel that's come out of the pit, but you're just bringing that...
So we don't care about clean material?
No, it may be, it may be loom on the site, whatever, we're working on a site that we have...
Black glue.
Yeah, you know, bring it back.
Or sometimes you get to a job like a camp, and a lot of times there's excess material there and so like, let's say you need spring...
let's say you need screen examined, backfill the foundation, well, we can be hollow screen examined there, but we can't use the material outside, so you need to truck it back.
And a lot of camps, say, if it's fifty by a hundred, you want to, we encourage you to truck the two hundred yards off and then bring that two hundred yards back.
Exactly, so we need to, that's a lot of operation.
Exempt?
We don't sell material, so we're not, we're not equipped where they're just selling material.
Right, so that.
So we put an exemption in there for clean fill, clean material.
Clean material would be acceptable at all.
Yeah, exempt of clean.
And I imagine if you found hazardous material, that's a whole different ballgame.
We're fine, if you want to put no hazardous material, absolutely.
I mean, you don't, you don't want it anyway.
Who's the difference in the definition of hazardous material, contaminated material?
I switched it to clean. I've been dealing with that for over twenty years.
I don't have a definition for that.
Sorry, that was the only thing that stood out, so I'm just getting all sort of fine.
And then we just put this together with the list we had that you gave us. What's the board want to do?
Tom?
You're wanting to walk through the standards for this?
I.
That was a question.
That is the question. Would, do you agree we should walk through the standards?
First of all, I think we make sure that all the submissions are in that when necessary.
And decide at the table? I'm asking for an opinion.
Yeah, just have a couple of things done. Hash out kind of, I think we can go through the standards probably.
Okay. Agreed? Okay, and find out if we do have everything we need then.
How far out is the DEP with you guys?
Well, we.
Actually, I have five.
Yeah, we have a great, it's a simple requirement, so we'll probably file that.
This should be fairly simple.
Yeah.
That should be, how many days?
Permit number is fourteen, I'm not sure of the intent on the excavation.
And what are you, what are you applying to the DEP for? Like an under ten acre pit, just kind of registering or?
So it would basically just be, I think, a land clearing permit?
Yeah.
So, because DEP, once you exceed five acres, you have to file a notice of intent to comply. So then you're held to these standards, it'll basically match you as a standard.
Yeah, five acres were rubbed out.
Yeah, five acres open, or a deep pit, so until then, you don't actually have to file a DEP for that aspect of it. So we'll file a permit number, just for the land clearing.
Okay, so shall we go through then these and Tom?
I just need, the board needs. No, Kenny's statement of.
Yeah.
How we're doing on submissions.
Completed application, did we send your bill yet?
No, we're done. Have you given us any money yet? She didn't get any.
We got the copy of the, the floor area, doesn't matter, there's approved survey, North Arrow scale, corners are there, parcels are there, dates on it. We're not looking at a consultant for an escrow. Here and we've been through, letters are all notified. Conditions we're working on. Landscape buffer, they're going to have that hundred foot buffer all the way around it, also operations we've been through. Operational controls, fuel spills, we've discussed. About maintenance and inspections. Spirits are about the big thing left out there. So we do have a completed application and most of it we've been through.
Do we have copies of that?
My checklist?
Yeah.
No.
But most of it's right there, Tom. This is taken right out of the books, and that is taken right out of the books.
I think you want. The good deal, most of it really isn't going to apply to this except for the noise and we've already talked about that. No storage of material. Apparently you may have a shed out there or something, someday you just dispose of something, but really no buildings. Enters are all set with, no road buffering issues, no heat protection, so that was, that was set too.
Please put some kind of a gate across your lane here from the hill.
Yeah, that's, if you look up there, who planned these? Just right here. With signs and a gate by.
So they've done everything that they need to do?
At this point, yeah. They've got to wait for their DEP. Well, let's go through this guys and whiskey oil, yeah, all right? And this is making sure I have the right paperwork in front of me.
Six, six, three, seven, standards applicable to.
Six, six, three, seven.
Gotcha.
Standard applicable to conditional use.
Excuse me, Joyce, before we get into that, because there's one item, we have a quick cover and it hinges on the first clear point. Is there treatment necessarily on either side of the culvert, upstream, downstream, at the ends of the culvert? You guys aren't going to change that, obviously, you said you can't change the length of the culvert.
Not at this time.
Is there, is there any issue that needs to be addressed in terms of protecting water quality from?
Well, we're watching when they go to upgrade the road, we'll do a little bit of stormwater management with some drainage job to the side, a little catch basin, riprap as needed, because now it comes from the Cornish's house, straight right down to the river and washes out every time. I don't know if they have a foot gravel on the road or not, but there is no, it's down to the rock base, so. Any turnouts under the property, we dump that water off of that and then bring it down into a plunge pool, riprap. There is a slight grade, I think, from Milton Mills down as you're going in?
Yeah.
Or does it, it doesn't go up?
No.
So just a little, when you're doing the ditching and just give it a place to go and clean it before it gets down into the river, so.
So that would be something that they work on with you?
Yeah, yeah, a little road detail.
Thank you. You want me to run through these?
Yeah, go for it.
I just need help in putting the words to the finding the fact that addresses the easiest in the application. These are standards applicable to condition uses. A, use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird or other wildlife habitat.
Well, can we think?
Mark, the true falls.
We, we gotta change.
We need a true fall, Steve.
Yes, we can.
True, okay.
Please, Martin, let's see our F on your papers.
You just need on each of these items to.
A little explanation.
Right. A word or two to say what is the document that finds that these are addressed, that's all.
Right.
And I'm not going to say those, because I don't know what some of them are.
Do we have the buffer?
So somebody has to follow me along.
Right, well, we, we have the buffer and the improvement.
On the Hebo.
On the Hebo Highville.
Right, they're outside of the resource protection.
Protection, and they're outside of research protection, so.
And the DEP material, you guys are getting, has nothing to do with stone. Stone wall. B, the use will consider short cover and visual as well as actual access to what?
It's not applicable.
C, the use is consistent with the confidence of plan. True.
True.
Let's hang that on something clearly. Cover just. We're getting a new business in town, it would be one positive finding that.
Right, what is the wording going to be for?
It's an alternative.
Then I.
True.
Oh, and then that.
That's fine.
Do you have a copy of what we're reading?
Yes, we do, yeah.
Okay.
Responsible mineral extraction operation. D, traffic access to the site needs to standards contained in this ordinance and traffic congestion has been addressed and employees will perform the standards in this ordinance.
That, that's true.
That's true, they're not voiding schools.
When it's delaying the school zone during open hours.
Yeah.
Asking the DRT to put that sign up on the.
Yes, the DRT sign.
E, site design is in compliance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations.
There is a flood zone there. It's over here, is it?
It's highlighted on the map now, so there is no flood zone on the property. The only thing in there is that strain protection district, which isn't on their property, it's just the crossing right there.
Right.
F, adequate provision for disposal of all wastewater, so all the waste has been made. And A, applicable? G.
Hang on, hang on.
I'm just, you probably put it in your notes, but I was just wondering if you're going to be doing oil changes on the site? You're going to do that all offsite, so you won't, you won't come up with any any particular waste on the site, don't you think? It's just about me and some.
There is sand for refueling, having a ban?
That's the next one.
And we did talk about that a little bit, okay?
G, that's where we're at, right?
Yes.
Adequate provision for the transportation, storage and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made. Could be basically fueling issues, I guess.
Yeah, they have the tanks and the trucks.
Right.
They agree to come to carry the sponges or.
Yeah.
And look into a movable pad to put under the vehicle perhaps.
And there's some kind of facility onsite to store your, what do you call it, mats?
Do you get the.
In your trucks, right?
H, stormwater drainage system capable of handling a twenty five year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed.
Well, it's internally drained?
I don't know if it is yet, but. It's cooling it, yeah. Yeah, but I was, when we were walking in there, it seemed like maybe some water would pool up in there and there was like a big hole on the side of the road where you could tell like water pooled up and they were trying to get it to go down into the ground. I mean, until the thing is internally drained, we'll just have to pay attention to that.
So that will be addressed as, as the project develops, Ken?
Yes, it's been designed.
Just don't.
But it's not implemented.
I, adequate provision to control solar urchin and sanitation have been made. Place that that's applicable is primarily around the culvert.
Right, and then revegetation.
And revegetation. So reclaim.
Right, and that, all long kept on site. Stumps of the ground on the site.
Yeah, that's all in there.
Yeah, we have it all before.
J, there is adequate water supply to meet the demands of this proposed use and provide protection purposes. And A?
Well, I guess if someone was stuck in fire, which happens sometimes.
Which one I'm talking about here? I heard that.
I think you have the water right there.
Put one of these in a truck place.
You keep our extinguishers on there.
We did that when we were machines, so extinguishers and a cell phone.
K, the provisions for buffer strips, strips and onsite landscape provide adequate protection to neighboring properties detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor and the like.
Yes.
Yes.
The sixty disposals of the property line. Power of the operation.
And the, the proposed shape of the pit being internally drained.
The berms.
Yeah. All performance sta, L, all performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met. Yes? M, archaeological and historic resources as designated in the plan will be protected. And A, yes.
Well, that's kind of the cemetery, maybe. Well, we'll just keep an eye on this, you know, right, because that is a historic resource right there.
Yeah, we just.
So when they're, when they're working on that part of the road, you know, they want to be aware of the stone wall, like to knock the stone wall or something, something stuff like that.
Just maybe a finding would be that Richard and company would communicate with the Maple Grove Cemetery.
Yeah.
Understand these. That's it.
Right, that is it. So they accept for the application of me tomorrow?
If condition use application?
No.
Oh, the DEP. Yes, absolutely.
You have more questions, yes, you have concerns?
Why don't you know if we want to get you pinned down on a number of acres, you're going to have a opinion in terms of the town's escrow or.
Yeah, they need to, we should.
We got to pin that down.
So I think we're, we're going to go five acres? Yep, we'll cut that down, five acres.
We've always done a thousand an acre roughly as an escrow. We haven't changed it in years. As long as the loom's there, it's not a big deal. As long as it's material that we. Well, hopefully they, that red.
It's adequate topsoil to reclaim, you know, making a call for us, you know, it's all set up and so.
There's pretty good chance you guys will go on topsoil and.
At some center, if you want, like, well, that's exactly.
Yeah, and I think just if you're reclaiming and, you know, doing some moving at the same time, you're building the swales, the buffers all stay, that should be adequate. I don't even know what it would cost to agro seed an acre, but probably a thousand is going to cover it, but.
Right.
Is one of our conditions for topsoil is known to be violation of the site?
It is, yes.
One of their conditions they gave us.
They gave us that on. Anybody else? Any more?
Um, no.
That was the one thing you mentioned, right?
Sorry?
That was the one thing you mentioned.
That was what was hanging.
I mean, I could make a motion to have an apron on Milton Mills Road paved back twenty feet or something and, and see if the board likes it. I'll make a motion that.
With the reclaimed asphalt?
No, paved, like, just like Milton Mills Road.
His only assumption is motion's going to fail, is how I would have stood there.
Well, I mean, it's just, I mean, I go by there and there's gravel in the road almost every time I go by there.
Which isn't from them, it's from the Cornish's, but yeah.
Right, or from the TV or something, but it's like it's still more gravel.
I, I think a lot of that is mud with the road being improperly built, you know, so we can plan on improving the road. I, I think a lot of that is mud with the road being improperly built, you know, so we can plan on improving the roads. So we should really help solve that, that issue, you know?
But I think the reclaim is, if your concern is tracking, you know, the reclaim is going to act the same as, as asphalt would. In terms of. Right, well, it's just, I don't know if it was really putting heavy metals down on the road is gonna be a good idea. Whereas with this stream right there and everything didn't really make that much sense to me, so. Calcium is a metal and it does affect the landings pretty significantly. I don't know, I was just kinda, but.
You know that same concern with the reclaimed asphalt?
Well, it's not gonna stay put the same way it's paving it, but I mean.
I think the DEP is saying the capstone is, is what they're saying. I don't know if the lack of the better word, right.
They actually create their road programs for maintenance. When they'll do a design to maintain a dirt road in the shoreline zone, they.
They put it on.
They.
Yeah, calcium.
I don't know if try it wrong, but.
Well, I mean, if you watch the stuff, that's very herbicidal inside the road too.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, just going out, I guess I'll make a motion, I'd like to see asphalt in Britain come back about 20 feet from the Milton Mills Road, just to limit dust and debris getting on the road and.
Is there any, we would reclaim asphalt, is that, or is that?
That, that's his motion.
Yeah.
Straight forward.
In lieu of doing any other type of treatment to that area in order to.
So you want asphalt not to be reclaimed, so. The motion is, has not been seconded, that you'd like to see 20.
I just think it's fair.
How many feet, maybe?
20 feet.
20 feet apron, asphalt apron.
I mean, if that's not a convenient distance, maybe, you know, you can't fit a whole truck on it, maybe you'd wanna make it 30 feet.
Okay, let's say not more than 30 feet.
What, I don't know how big.
Well, I know, I know, but we gotta.
Where are the other pits?
Well, well, we gotta stick to this one right now until we, we get a second and then we can discuss what we're gonna do. So, his motion is, do I hear a second? An asphalt apron, not more than 30 feet.
Just like you did at Gromack.
Is there a second?
We haven't do that there. Well.
Not here the second, the motion fails.
Okay.
So, Ken, how, what do we do for F and N? For, because that, that is not that really far.
Yeah, they were bringing tractor trails out, especially Monac and coming on to 109. And you gotta remember, when, when the line of sight isn't for when they pull out, you have distance to stop, it's that when they pull out, they have enough speed to be up to the speed in that area before you catch up to them. So it's not that you have a distance to stop, so being able to pull up onto that, you've got some good line of sight out there too.
Do you mean on Milton Mills Road difficult to better sight than, because they're all that, also that one.
But just as far as where they're pulling out, and again, it's kinda unique because they're pulling onto a road to come out onto a road, to go out onto the road.
Yeah.
Um, I think if they were pulling directly onto Milton Mills, I'd be right with Gavin saying a 30-foot apron paved entrance would be something, but the road's already there.
Can we revisit an issue?
Sure.
Wait for me.
Yeah.
That.
And they would probably be the first ones to say the gravel's not working, we're gonna pave a little entrance.
Okay, if, if, when you do your maintenance, you're fixing up, you're guzzling up and you find out it's still a pig, you know, the lipstick didn't work. We're gonna paint it. And they can come back to it. I wouldn't write it that way, by the way, in their conditions, but no lipstick on a pig.
One of the problems we were seeing with Monac is when the truck pulled out, even though there's a paved entrance, there was this cloud that followed them. The truck would stop and the cloud would just keep going by. That's lack of dust control and we had to get on them to sweep all that, it was winter sand basically that was on the paved entrance they had there. And they had to, you know, sweep it up, clean it up and, and get that, all that dust out of there, so when the trucks pulled out, there wasn't a big cloud coming out. It looked like they'd been pulling out.
And there's very few ways that you can control this. I mean, naturally, these guys are gonna fix the road so they can travel it, so they're gonna put material down, hopefully it's gonna stay there. So it's not be going up the road again, because it's always gonna cost you more money to fix it down then.
Yep.
And that's one way to fix it. And the only other two ways to, to do that is either you have to use calcium or you have to use water. But I would think that you guys can put down some material that, especially if you're using that material in there, that doesn't really want to dust up anymore.
Yeah.
Dust up in there really isn't gonna dust up.
Yeah.
I think in fairness, though, we should do some kind of apron officially.
Well, I don't disagree, but I think that, I think that reclaimed stuff is, I mean, that.
I view that as well, yes.
Something.
Yeah, something to that nature. It's a lot more cost effective and, and it stays. I mean, I put up tons of it and it's.
It's up?
Yeah.
Leslie, any thoughts on it? I know you have some first-hand experience.
Well, I mean, it's, if, if a gravel or dirt road is not properly maintained, you don't have a lot of dust, because I did on a dirt road. And we don't have a lot of it.
Right.
Because our road is properly maintained.
Tom, where are you on the safety issue?
On Gavin's motion?
Gavin's motion got it.
Right, no, I'm happy with this solution that these fellows are gonna.
Okay, so get the road up to what we have to, has been discussed. And if one needs to be done, you gotta know it right away.
Well, I think we should say they should have some kind of apron, because we definitely put that on everything else.
But not everything else has gone from a road to a road.
But I'm saying that the compromise with the reclaimed asphalt or the.
I believe that we did have calcium.
Yeah, I think it's.
I think it's in your notes anyway, but.
No, it's in our conditions from.
Yeah, there was some dust control.
Does, well, there's dust control.
Yeah.
Or I didn't hear it somewhere.
And I give Gavin, obviously, chemicals aren't good for the environment, no matter where, the way you put them or use them at all. And honestly, I'm against it, but sometimes you gotta do what you gotta do.
We don't use calcium on our, we do not.
But you gotta proper.
Because it's, it's, it's maintained properly.
In a lot of it, it's the ground.
You're just a little, uh, crap.
Perhaps when we're maintaining the tour, improving tour, if you feed dust controls in there, stone wall, you have dust control.
No, calcium where I live, because I'm, I'm too close to the lake.
I agree with you, but just.
I mean, years ago, we did have problems with dust every year, because I'd have to close my doors during the summer, because I wear dust everywhere. I don't anymore.
Right. Anything else?
No, I think if we're all in agreement, we should.
Well, let's just tie down the detail of the length of the, yeah, the length of the reclaimed material. What, what do you need to adequately prevent much stuff being tracked out there?
I think it's 50 feet. Well, certainly, a standard construction entrance, if they call it, or we're doing construction sites, yeah, you build a construction entrance to prevent these exact issues, it's typically between 20 and 30 feet. Um, yeah, so that's kind of the norm. And that's to prevent a tracking of the road and dust control, all those things like that.
I'd make a motion then that we adopt, adopt a design for the apron of 30 feet of, what do you call it?
Reclaim.
Reclaim, well, that's all. Okay. And that, and there's an adequate dust mitigation plan that would go along with that.
I just said, that's what I'm.
I'll second that, yeah, motion.
Do we have that, Brandon, before we go further?
I hope so.
Okay. Seconded by Gavin. All in favor? Post? Staying? That's it.
So we're gonna treat that like a condition? Will that be like a condition?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you using adequate screen or in there?
Yeah, periodically, yes.
Is that at your other site right now?
Yeah, the one. Yeah, a small, small, you know.
Oh.
Yeah.
There's less than one screen.
You wanna read the roster about that?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
All right, Ken, at this point, do we have any other things we want to do? Or can I hear a motion to approve the application for conditional use permit? Make a motion to approve the permission use permit?
Second.
You get a second? All in favor? And it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So do we come back in or do we just submit all this stuff at the cabinet?
We can just put this stuff into me and get your conditional use permit, and we'll add, close on the property, get your DEP stuff in line.
Okay. So put all this stuff on the plan, is that what you'd like to see?
Yeah, yeah. And then the DCS, you bring it in, you sign it, you guys have it.
Email, we send it.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, whatever was added.
Yep.
So we have to wait till all this dust level is out or not?
They probably have to wait to buy the prompting.
Yes.
They'll secure a permit before they buy it.
Otherwise, we could have.
Yeah, we could probably.
But we can have it anyway, so, I mean, if you backed out of it, it's a lot of permit.
Gotcha.
Permit would be in your hands. Usually they're transferable, but usually in the gravel pits, we kinda just wanna make sure. Um, if we felt comfortable with you guys running it, we may have had less conditions on versus somebody else, we didn't feel as comfortable with reclaiming in the hours of operation, things like that, so.
So where do we end up, is that a thousand per?
Yeah. Kind of what I heard. So if we kept an escrow here, make an interest, and when you're all done, just come in and get the money and by then it'll be you.
Yeah.
And I have grandchildren.
Okay, you all ready?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you, guys, very, very much. Okay, we, we kinda jumped a little bit. We, under old business, we get all sign the Mylar copy of the Buzzell Road subdivision. This is done Paul Wills, we're gonna do a sidewalk 15 that at 8:00 AM. There's no new business tonight, but there, there are a couple of things that. I've spoken with Lee J Feldman, put a call in, and he is willing to help any way he can in his words to, with our bylaw revisions. We have a committee to do that, it'll be at a different time. We are gonna try and meet during the day, not the evenings. I wish it was a day. And any of you can, will see what we're doing and can always, you know, if you get, get an odd Wednesday morning off or Tuesday morning and we're meeting, we want you to be here, you know, anytime. And we're gonna start in October to do that, and the subcommittee is Tom, Wesley, Dennis and Don, me. No, 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 Yolanda said she saw enough of us on Thursday nights and she wasn't willing to give up, you know.
I agree.
Her, her wrong time working. She said she liked that.
I haven't paid a bill.
She, she, you know, I, I, people always come up with excuses. But we are, we will be meeting in the morning, because I think all of us do much better in the morning if a meeting goes a little later. When it goes a little later and it's five minutes a night, it's too much for any of us and all of us, I think. One of the other things, and that's gonna talk, we will get together and decide which days, day or days, and we'll just do it till we're done. Um, when we're ready to move on to the comprehensive plan. He's putting a plethora of stuff together for us to, to see what we have to do. The other thing we have to do, and I'm gonna say it every single meeting, and someday I'll even do it, is when we wanna speak, raise our hands instead of talking over each other. It makes, number one, the minutes much easier to do. Um, I can tell you that our last minute, our last meeting, the minutes are eight pages. And there, let's just say, technical difficulties, you will have them shortly. I would like it if we would please read several things. Read the minutes before you get here, eight pages. We would be here in half an hour reading the minutes. And then a half an hour making corrections. So if you can read the minutes when they get emailed to you, that would help us so much, because, and I understand, you don't have, you know, access to it, but that would really be very good.
Contact sheet, um, updated?
It has not been updated yet, but it will be. Dennis, what's your address? We, we need your address.
Address, what?
Your address, where you live.
Where I live.
What do you want to receive?
Mailing and mail.
My mailing address. What, which one do you want? My physical address, my mailing?
Mailing, uh, mailing.
Yeah, I think it's 1095.
And I'm writing this for you, okay?
Yeah.
And you're an acting, right?
Yeah, well, more or less, yeah. Depends on what ring we get.
Who tries the season a couple of times?
I, I love it when the meetings get punchy, so be careful. And we don't have your, um, the new email address Marie did for you?
She hasn't done it yet.
Okay. Then we are going to use your.
Can, can I make a request that we try to have hard copies available the day before the meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just in the planning board file.
We, we are making a request to have hard copies the day before the meeting.
I'm trying to have it hard.
Okay.
Remember, there's only me now.
I try to have them the day after the meeting, but.
Oh, but you're just that kinda guy.
Thank you.
Here's a, a, a.
Is that the one that needed to be updated, was Dennis?
No. Not enough. Um, and the other thing I'm, I'm going to, as everybody else is, is when we do have these, because we do meet first and third, sometimes we forget what notes we've already, and they're here. And we're asking the same questions and we're discussing the same things. And so if, if, if LeVice was coming up again next week, next meeting, please take this out and look at the notes, so we can save time that way. I think it will all be, be more in tune. And I, you know, there might be things we wanna look over before the meeting that we didn't see here, and it'll come out. And it'll just make it, because I have this horrible feeling, we're just gonna get busier and busier for the next, until November?
Till it crashes.
Till it crashes.
2020, I think Tom, Tom was the only one on the board that we were doing 10 and 11 o'clock meetings every single meeting. Just subdivision after subdivision after subdivision, so.
Well, I'd like to get the word out on the street, then there's no more than 10, then anyone who does it, it's bitching.
That's your problem too.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's names of it all.
That's one of the things on, on the bylaws that we have. We can have bylaws and we can have policies. Policies can be changed very easily. Policies, you raise your hand, you agree to this. And I would personally say, if we have meetings that are going to 11 o'clock, because I'm talking. I'm not opposed to meet every other week, rather than have huge gaps of time in between them, you know, it just, we could get more done.
Cause after nine thirty, ten o'clock, is either all no, or all yes?
Exactly.
Not a yes or a no, it's all no.
Exactly.
My only issue was having to raise your hand all the time, I keep getting flashbacks to, when I was in school, I had to go to the bathroom. I teach with naught, just wouldn't leave.
You do not need to ask permission for that.
Just get up and go.
Just get up and go.
Well, you didn't want to set necessary, that is.
Well, while it is, you know, and, could I have a motion to adjourn this meeting, so we can shut our doors off? Thank you, thank you, Jerry.
See, I went to miss all the meeting.